Go ahead and call to order. The Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. Let's have a roll call, please.
Chair Williams.
Here.
Vice Chair Ratliff.
Here.
Commissioner Miles.
Here.
Commissioner Willie.
Here.
Commissioner Houston. Commissioner Slobodan.
Here.
Commissioner Higdon.
Here.
Please stand as we give the pledge of allegiance and have invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. Thank you for this opportunity to come together. Lord, we also thank you for the rain. Please watch over and keep those traveling safe. Lord, and bless this meeting, bless the decisions that are made here. Guide our minds and our thoughts and our words, that they all might be pleasing to you. We ask all of this in the name of your son, Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Do we have any citizens' communications?
No, sir.
We don't have any citizens.
Much less.
Well, sometimes they can phone or call them in, but anyway. We're gonna have the swearing in of Commissioner Dustin Higdon. If you would stand.
You're gonna stand right there, raise your right hand. You're gonna repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Dustin Higdon.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm?
Do you solemnly swear or affirm?
That I will faithfully execute?
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of my appointed office?
The duties of my appointed office.
Of the state of Texas?
Of the state of Texas.
And will, to the best of my ability?
And will, to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend?
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and laws?
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States?
Of the United States.
And of this state?
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Yay.
Absolutely. Yay. Welcome aboard, Dustin.
Thank you.
By way of introduction, do you know who we all are?
Yes, and yeah, for the most part, yeah.
All right, that brings us our presentation from me, but I was not at the last city council meeting. I guess we're gonna defer to Mr. Ben.
I do not have the agenda in front of me, so this is all off of memory right now. The first readings for the ordinance changes that we saw last time, which I'm trying to recall what they were, went smoothly. We're not gonna put in consent for the next meeting, because there were some questions that were asked about the changes to the table. There was some confusion on if we're changing anything further, instead of just changing the S for special use to C for conditional use. And so we're gonna explain a little bit further, but it should go smoothly. It went smoothly the first time.
Hang on, were you around when we were doing those changes?
Yes. He was, he was. He actually gave us the definition for that type of use for personal professional services. And so we're gonna discuss that further. And then I believe a plat for Shelton was approved, the one that I was telling y'all that was hard to read on 709 Shelton. They had questions as well, because it was really hard to read, but they did approve it with that access easement. And so I've reached out to the surveyor to correct some minor mistakes, and then we can get that filed. I believe that's all we had. We had a pretty light meeting for council for the first time in quite a while.
With a little excitement at the beginning, but other than that. Anybody have any questions on that? So we'll go on to action items, and number three is review and approve the minutes from the meeting on April the first. That should be in your packet.
My message has finally just come through. It's because the internet was down?
Yeah, it looks like it might be back up.
Yeah. Regarding the minutes.
I can make a motion that we approve the minutes from April first.
Have a motion made in second that we approve the minutes from April the first. All those in favor, right hand. Motion made, seconded, and carries. Number four, receive the monthly code enforcement report. And it's gonna change. We've gone from no rain to deluge.
Man. I ran the numbers, and this is gonna be off the top of my head. We had a lot of cases this last month, but we are really officially into high grass season now, as you can tell from the rain we're getting, and thank you guys for coming through this weather. Right now, as of April thirtieth, we were at forty-two trash cases that have been done this year, ninety-six high grass cases, and then thirteen other miscellaneous cases, which again can be anything from a property maintenance violation to no permits, pool, things of that nature. As far as the breakdown of those numbers, ninety-seven of those have complied, ten are in court currently, and then forty-four are open. And then code enforcement's still kept the running tab from when we've started proactive code enforcement again, which started in 2021. So currently, we're at a thousand two hundred and forty-two cases completed, eighteen are in court, and then forty-four are open. With that, I can field any questions.
You were, has the city pulled any of those vehicles? Just the vehicles out of the 709 Shelton?
Have they?
Yes.
I'd have to contact the police department to find out where they're at on that portion of it, because that is not a code enforcement function.
I was just waiting for you to let you. Just to give you an update, there's one vehicle left.
Okay. I haven't received it. I know the-
What was the question? About the vehicles being pulled from Shelton?
They had until yesterday, I think.
Okay.
And they were gonna be towing them if they didn't. So I know that they had started to move them out last week, I think. Either you or Shannon had sent me this.
Shannon caught one on the road, and I saw the second one being loaded. As another piece of feedback, the person who does it has vehicles without license plates.
I think their ten days were up Monday, or maybe it was Sunday, but their ten days was up. And when I talked to Captain Goodrich, he said that if they didn't mean it, they were gonna be towing them out, so.
So it looks like whoever put them in there got- has gotten five of the six out.
Okay. And I know the court has also been in contact with the property owner. With, I put them in court for my violations, and so we actually found a contact. We used to not have one, until we found one, and so they may be moving that out from some pressure from the court as well.
Another piece of feedback, there was somebody weed eating in that area a couple days ago, and yet it doesn't look any different.
Have you found any questionable areas within our codes when you?
Regarding code enforcement?
Yeah.
No, code enforcement really is kind of a, one of your more straightforward type of ordinances. And so it's very similar across the cities for high grass and trash. And so, and it's also identified in the property maintenance code, and so that's why it's more of a uniform code. So this, it works. Sure, yeah, I can, so we, this is not on your report, but we, as those that know, we handle vacant commercial structures. And so we adopted the ordinance in 2023. We had an ordinance, we strengthened it into 2023 to one of the more stronger ordinances in the state of Texas regarding vacant commercial structures. And an update on that is we met with the attorney last week to discuss getting compliance, because so far, this is, these are rough numbers. I think I've sent out about twenty-four, twenty-five notices of vacant commercial structures. We've had a couple respond that say that it's actually not a vacant structure. We use it for church, or we use it for this reason, and so they'll sign an affidavit. But there's still about twenty remaining that are vacant, so we met with the attorney on a process forward to start getting compliance. And so we're moving forward in that direction to use the court system to start bringing compliance to these properties, so that way we can get in, inspect, and catch these buildings before they fall in on themselves, like the one did on Main.
One of the issues is, is the first step after he sends that notification is they have to come in and register their building and pay an annual fee for registering their building? And yeah, like one person?
I've had one, and after registration, they have an inspection. So that's the portion of the ordinance that is stronger, is in that inspection, we can call for a structural engineer if we deem it necessary to see if the building is structurally sound. And then they have an inspection every six months, so you keep getting in that building, and then they keep registering. And of course, you know the fee goes up, but the idea is to get in the building to catch any building code violations before, again, it falls in on itself like the one did on Main.
And at this point, they've just been ignoring his notice, and so we're gonna send those through the court system to get the court to order them to.
Are we in communications with the old nursing home by the airport?
He-
Or has he cut us off, or?
Not, well, he hasn't responded. He's one of the ones that has not responded, and so he will be one of the ones that will be going to court. You know, I will say that vacant commercial structures is something that a lot of Texas cities are having a hard time with at the moment. And so it's a collective effort across multiple cities to try to figure out what works, to get these resolved.
The other old nursing home, too.
It's for sale, isn't it?
That one, so the one on Dyer was bought, or was under contract when I last met with an owner, and they want to put it back into a productive use, but that is another one that's on the, on that list.
Okay.
But we did, that ownership did change hands. I think it sold on the county court steps, if I recall.
Was that here recently?
It was, yeah, within the last year, I believe.
Okay.
I think it's listed now.
Yeah, that's what I was-
Somebody told me it was listed.
Yeah, so I think whoever, I guess, purchased it at the sale now wants to sell it.
I've seen on the inside of it, though, it's, it's rough.
Well, there was, so when the freeze happened in twenty-two, or twenty-one, the pipes busted.
Oh, really?
So everything above waist-high is gone, is basically ruined.
Yeah. Yeah, we met with the owner that bought it, and his plan would have taken zoning approval, and I, if he's selling it again, then he's obviously not gonna be going for that approval.
Okay, regarding the monthly code enforcement report, any questions?
Will you move on real quick? I have one question. So if they go to court, or they never show up, what happens? Do the city end up taking it eventually, or what?
A warrant. If they don't show up for court, they'll schedule a second hearing and for this show cause, and if they don't show up for that, then a warrant will be put out for their arrest.
Can you tell me if the building across Houston Street from us, from Rainbow Courts, is on the list? A vacant commercial building. Used to be a grocery store, a barbecue place, or truck ran into it last year.
If I'm on the same page as you, yes, I believe they are.
Okay. It was for sale for a while, but they took it off the list.
Yes. I'll double-check, but I believe I know what building you're talking about in there.
Yeah. See a lot of rodents.
Yeah.
All right, thank you for your code enforcement report. Receive the Development Services Department report.
Okay, so for the month of April, we have issued ten building permits, three demolition permits, three electrical permits, and seven plumbing permits. In those building permits, seven of those were new homes, which roughly is gonna add eight hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars to your community. As far as that, there were some-
Can you give me a breakdown on that? Is it all in one area, or?
This one is, yes, this one is all in one area. This was all cornerstone, I believe, off the top of my head. I will make the remark that there is actually more investment in smaller projects this month than in new homes. So you had roughly almost one point one million dollars invested in your community through remodels, roofing, fencing, demolition. We had some, we had one or two bigger commercial remodels that applied for permit this month, which brings your number to that amount. With that, that is the report, unless you have any questions.
Have we pulled occupancy permits for the new AutoZone yet?
They're not ready yet. They're getting close. They just had their permanent power inspection last week, and so that quickly, usually in a couple weeks, they'll get their final C.O. after that point. Most likely, what they're gonna do is, they're the shell builders typically, and they'll turn it over to who's gonna be the people that put in the shelves and things like that. They'll take it over, and they may take them one through two, and then they'll get their final C.O. from that point.
And cornerstone is still on track as far as phases?
They're remaining consistent as far as the homes that are being pulled by D.R. Horton. As far as the phasing, they've applied for review on phase one D, one E, and one F, and then a lift station, and so that's still on review from the engineers. But as far as build-out, they've just now started building one B. All the buildings you're seeing right now are from one A. You're starting to see some new frames for one B, but one A hasn't been completely built out either. I'm assuming, I guess, some lots are sold on one B, so they started building those out at the same time as one A.
And the other two projects?
As same as last, I don't know if he's found a builder. And if so, if they're gonna remain those lots at the size that they're plotted at, or if they're gonna come in with a new zoning ordinance and a new plat for you guys to review.
Any further questions on the Development Services Department report? We'll move on then to workshop to consider and take any necessary action on a recommendation to the City Council regarding the potential amendment to section fourteen point zero two point one two three sign requirements. And are we up and running?
To give a reminder of what has happened last time, before we start workshopping this again, we have still kept proposed to keep pole signs out of the ordinance and just make a comment to the city council that that's something that you guys discussed and would like them to review further. The other portion of it was there was some language that was requested to be added of the "and their designee" language, if you recall, so that's been added. So instead of it saying the city manager only, it's a city manager and their designee, or building official, building official and their designee. And so that has been added. And so everything else has remained the same from that point on. So any questions or any remarks, recommendations, before you take action on this, because if you take action on this today, it will go to city council at their Monday meeting.
So this is the last and final review for us?
We're hoping so.
I had a question about, that I emailed you about, about the landmark signs when it refers to, I think, the historical markers. It's a little confusing to me. The term, using the term landmark, I think would be confusing to some people because that's technically the title of a marker, is the Texas. Anyway, I wrote some stuff down for you, Ben. But I just think that we ought to reword that a bit. There's a few places, I think three places, that it's brought up, but I just don't think it should say landmark sign. It can say a historic sign, or because one of the official markers is a, like the one that we have, is actually a recorded Texas historic landmark sign.
Okay.
So there's more then than just one type of histor- or?
Yes, yes.
There's plaques that are applied to buildings, there's freestanding, and there's
Yes.
Almost like a cemetery.
Basically, I'm sorry.
Landmark, there's a physical structure that you're recognizing, and then there might be a historical marker at a location where something historic occurred, or not a landmark there, but-
There's a subject marker is what it's called. Subject marker, and there's also National Register, like the depot has, marker. And there's a people marker.
So we're trying to-
At the library, the author peri has a marker. So I just think using that term landmark is a little misleading, and because it can be personal property, like a house, or it can be commercial property. It could be buildings, it could be a person, it could be the side of something historical with historical relevance, like you're saying, Tim. I think that's what you're saying. And I think that we ought to just reword it a bit.
We can. Let me read the definition for the commission, and then we can, we'll move forward from there. So what we have for the landmark sign, this is the definition, and there's subsections within that definition. So a landmark sign is one of the following types of signs that exemplifies the cultural, architectural, or commercial identity of the city, is iconic in its location, and contributes to the surrounding neighborhood character. And so the subsections within that, one of them is a historic sign, which is a landmark sign that exemplifies the cultural, architectural, or commercial history of the city, and was constructed more than fifty years before the date of this application. There's a vintage sign, which is a landmark sign that is iconic and culturally significant, and was constructed between fifty and twenty-five years before the date of application of the ordinance. And then there's a replica sign, which is a landmark sign that is an exact reproduction of a historic sign, which no longer exists.
I mean, why don't we just say historic sign, not a landmark sign? Because it's not just, and it's not just for the city, it's for the state and the whole area. So I don't think city should be in there, the commercial history of the area.
We, so-
Not commercial.
The only remark I'll make to the state is we don't regulate that today. So we wouldn't put that, we would start regulating that. If somebody's gonna get a historical landmark sign from the state, then the city's not gonna say no to that, that they'll get their sign that-
No, it's pretty rigid, their process.
And so we wouldn't reference them in our ordinance, because that's not something that we have jurisdiction over.
Do we need to include a little verbiage along that line?
No.
That we acknowledge, we acknowledge state approved?
No, because the way your ordinance work is when you don't refer to something, that means you don't have jurisdiction over that item.
And it says that, that basically in here, I just don't like the term landmark sign.
We can, we can change it.
Historic sign.
Yeah.
So why not just-
This would also apply to a sign that's just historically significant, not a historical marker, but a a sign in the city that-
Yeah, if you, if you had like a really old hotel, for example, and they had a, just, that sign meant a lot to the community, that's not a historic sign.
Even though the hotel might not be there-
Unless it's fifty years old.
Right.
The sign still has some historic meaning.
Yeah.
It's not necessarily historic, historical marker, but it-
Well, you do say twenty-five to fifty years in there.
For, for a vintage, you have a historic that'd be fifty years or older, vintage for twenty-five to fifty. And then a replica, if it was, if somebody remade that hotel sign and wanted to put it there, then it would fall under that.
And also, maybe we should say something about directional signs to historic sites, or whatever. Do we need to say that?
So directional signs, we don't regulate.
Is that TechDOT?
It, yeah, typically-
Or the state.
The city, but it is, it is not, the city controls those signs, so.
Yeah, it's, it's not a, this section is for, you got, is for signs that require a permit. And so those signs are not gonna require a permit, because it's either coming from TechDOT or it's coming from the city.
Or the state, like from my directional signs, historic, that's a historic marker. I have to get state historical commission approval for those.
Yeah, and we won't regulate those.
So that's what you're saying.
Yes, it's coming from another, another agency.
Like hospital, library, things like that, downtown area, those are all state or TechDOT?
Any, yeah.
Or city.
Yeah, I mean, so the city signs are gonna be on local roadways, which won't be your highways, and then TechDOT's gonna be along your highways.
So a person can't just decide they wanna put the arrow sign that-
That's right. If they put that, then it'd be removed.
Okay.
Yeah. So we, we can change that wording.
It's just me. I mean, I just think from being involved in historical stuff, and the, I talked to the Mountain County, somebody with the Mountain County Historical Commission, and my first thought was, before I read this, was that the historical markers are literally a pole sign, or can be, unless there's a plaque on the building. And so that was my first thought, but that's pretty much covered.
Yeah, we don't regulate that.
You don't regulate that.
They would be able to post those. But we can, we can amend that. I just need some ideas from the commission on what you think is the appropriate way to word trying to accommodate historical signs that may not be historical. They may just have, they may have important significance.
More, more language, because you have to just, then you have, you have the historical, the actual landmark signs, which might be historical markers or otherwise, and then you have other historical signs. So you end up creating, but this covers everything. Everything is covered in here.
Define landmark, then.
It just doesn't necessarily highlight the landmark.
What it defines landmark?
Well, so this, the way that this definition is, is a landmark sign is, is the overall group of signage, okay? And then you're gonna have subsections within that sign, so you don't need a definition for a landmark sign, because the landmark sign is either gonna be one of these three options, which is either gonna be a historic sign, a vintage sign, or a replica sign. So there's not gonna be a, just a landmark sign. It's gonna be one of those, that it will have to fit that criteria.
Who determines qualification as code?
Right, when they come in with an application. If they come in and they have a sign that's fifty years older than this ordinance is, then it would be defined as a historical, a landmark sign that is a historic sign.
And how does this, how does this filter in with our charge that we were charged with under the new long-range? They told us to simplify some of our verbiage and stuff. Is this simple enough, or?
Yeah.
I'm trying to hard explain, but-
I know what you're referring to. They, we have a lot of work in that regard. The reason is, I'll give a presentation on it when we talk about the diagnostic report, is when you define something, you wanna define it one time, and then you wanna cross-reference after that to avoid defining it multiple times in multiple different ways, is what they're referring to. So if we define it this way one time, then this would be the only section it's found in. And then what your ordinances should do after that is refer to the definition. You know, you call it a landmark sign, and then if somebody wants to know what a landmark sign is, there's only one spot that they're gonna find a landmark sign. Instead of marking a landmark sign, and then you explain what that means in your regulations, that's what they're talking about.
And you said a landmark, the definition, usually large object on land that is easy to see and can help a person find the way to place, to a place near it? Is that what?
Say that again?
A usually large object on the land that is easy to see and can help a person find the way to a place near it.
Yeah, that's a good definition.
So is that, that where the problem lies?
No, not really. I mean, I'm okay with it. I just think it's a little confusing using historic landmark. Not all historic signs are landmark signs, like I think of as a place, or a building, or a tree, or something, not, not a person. Like some of the historic signs are, but if it just says historic signs, then that takes care of it, basically.
Is there another word that you would suggest from, instead of saying landmark?
I think we can just say historic signs.
But that then removes the vintage signs and replica signs.
Could it not be something along the lines of like a community significant sign, or something along those words? That would be what's deemed, because if we had a really old hotel in the city of Rockdale, for example, that sign's gonna be significant to Rockdallians, because, you know, your grandpas and your grandmas work there, and it's a family-owned business. Somebody from out of town, that's just gonna be an old sign, so you could use language like that, maybe.
Would one example be the McVoy?
Right.
Sign?
Yes.
Because it's no longer referencing a building, because the building no longer exists, but we're gonna suggest under this, that could be either a landmark sign, either a historically historical sign or a vintage sign.
Yes.
What is culturally significant?
A culturally significant sign, yeah. Community significant.
Wouldn't want to use historical sign, because that's one of the definitions of historical sign, but you would say-
I think community sign sounds nice.
A community sign?
As far as wrapping up the ambiguity with landmark. Then that also directs people that are from out of town, like, oh, here, I wanna learn about the community. It's very straightforward.
And that would be that if you, if you find another type of sign that-
And, and that would be that if you, if you find another type of sign that you would not wanna say, because you would just, you've, you have defined a historic sign as a landmark sign that's old, and a vintage sign is a landmark sign that is old. There may be a different kind of sign that could be added to that under the historic, community significant bracket. That, that would give this a broader application, should it be needed.
So as, so you mean as in like a subsection? So as in like a number four in the definition, a community significant sign?
Well, no, instead of calling it landmark signs, call it community significant signs, and then right now, all we've defined are three types of landmark signs.
Yeah.
But we may find a different type of sign that you don't wanna call a landmark sign, but would still qualify under community significance that we would want to protect. That, that broadens the, uh, the application of this ordinance, should it be needed.
Okay.
I like that.
Took a while to get there, but I kinda liked the results. No, I, I, yeah. That's what we're here for. That's what we're here for, right?
What if you said, under, under this, culturally, or excuse me, community, what do you call it?
Significant.
A community significant.
Sign would be, instead of saying one of the following types, you just said community significant sign would be a sign that exemplifies this, and example of that would be one, two, and three. And that way, if there's something else came up that fit this definition, it wouldn't be.
Right.
Charles, you be at council to help them when they get to this chapter.
Yeah.
I think it's repeated too, on another page, the historic sign, and it says the landmark sign, the same paragraph. The pages aren't numbered, so I don't.
Okay. I'll, I'll double check to make sure we're not doubling up, but.
I think we are.
If so, we'll, we'll delete the doubled up section, and then we'll go with the one that was discussed today.
What else?
That's it. All historic stuff. Thank you.
Thank you. So any questions on the type of sign, is that we're allowing any concerns? Are we comfortable with moving forward with those proposed, and then just making a note for council to determine if they wanna add pole signs to that or not, because currently, we're not allowing them?
So what, because it's like it's mixed deals with the pole signs. I hear some saying they want them, and I don't know where getting rid of them came about, so what, what was going on with the pole signs?
So, the reason that we've taken pole signs out is because of the two variance requests that've come before council. Both have been pole signs, and both were denied. A pole sign, and instead said, we will grant you this variance if you install a monument sign.
Okay, so they were denied at the council?
Yeah, and that came from council, and so that's why we've removed them, to reflect those multiple variances that were approved. And then, it, it is a common thing, um, city, I won't say a lot of cities do it, but a lot of comprehensive plans call for signage to start coming shorter. So you remove that clutter, that's what they'll call it, their, their highway corridor clutter, as well as new, you'll see new subdivision's come in, and cities will request that they put their utilities in the ground, so you don't get the telephone poles with the wires above your houses. Is that kind of idea why pole signs are starting to be removed from sign codes?
I think there's another good reason, because if you drive through town, there are lots of empty, partially, you know, ruined, and certainly out of date messaging on a lot of pole signs. And actually changing a sign, if it's a monument sign, is either, I get, I have a feeling a lot of people just don't wanna get up on a pole and, and, and make the changes, and so it, it leaves a lot of, you know, so part of our eyesore in town are abandoned, unused pole signs, or non-maintained pole signs, and I guess that would be one thing, do we have, would, would it fit in here to have some type of control over, I know you, you say you can't control what people say First Amendment, but can you control the fact that if I have a sign that says gasoline is two nineteen a gallon, and I don't sell gasoline anymore?
Yeah, there's, so there's a section, I'll flip to it, of talking about, um, non-conforming signs and signs that, um, for example, that a business would relocate, and maybe they keep their old sign up. And so there's a section of maintenance and removal towards the back of your packet, it's section O. And so there's a maintenance requires, that says that all signs shall be maintained in good and safe structural condition, shall be painted on all exterior parts unless coated or made of rust resistant material, and shall be maintained in good condition and appearance. And then if any owner fails to maintain, repair, or remove that sign after due notice, shall be guilty of a misdemeanor. Then there's a section that talks about that will inspect those signs, and then there's a removal section that requires them to remove those signs within ten days. And so that would address signs that come in bad condition, or if a business, there's another section here that's somewhere located, I think if a business leaves for six months, and they're out of operation, then they'll get a notice from the city, requesting them to remove that signage that advertises that no longer existing business.
Do you know of any cities that might tie that into sale of a business? Like if a business comes for sale, you have the ability to tell them, by the way, if you sell his business, the sign needs to change and.
You wouldn't, that would be how your code enforcement operates. That wouldn't be something that you put in your ordinance. It would be something of like a, a standard operating procedure of, as a code enforcement officer that deals with signs. If I see this business selling, then I have a list of, to call them and add them to this list that I've notified them, that they, once it sells, that they need to remove this sign.
Unless it's the same business, right?
Right, yeah.
Something that's changed the topic of this.
This is under the assumption it's.
Triggers, you know, triggers for code enforcement that.
Yeah, no, that, that is just an operating procedure, and so, you have the, you have the triggers that require, calls for the inspections, then they have ten days after the, after notification to fix whatever code enforcement has found is wrong, whether it's removing the sign, repairing the sign. And then they, you've put in there, that'd be a misdemeanor.
That, that wouldn't be a prerequisite for occupancy or anything like that, like, uh, you can't go in there till that sign is changed to represent your business within thirty days, or. Uh, that's getting too far reaching, right?
Right, because occupancy has to deal with the building. And so what an occupant, a certificate occupancy does is it says that building that you're located in, you meet all the city codes. It wouldn't necessarily deal with how you advertise your business. And so, especially if it was somebody else's sign, and then they moved in, and they, they haven't put their sign up yet, you wouldn't prevent that business from opening, because another occupant is not tending to what they're supposed to be tending to. I, I use, we're, about the vacant commercial structures, we're talking about to the attorney. We use, I'll use the example of, there's a clause, every year you own that building, that, that fee goes up. If that building were to sell to somebody else, they're not gonna be held liable for all those other years, they're back at year one. It follows the property owner, not the land, so the sign would be essentially the same thing, it'd follow the property owner. It'd be their responsibility.
Bobby, was your question, you were under maintenance chapters?
Yeah, well, I, you know, I, I hear that. The problem is, what happens if it's the, the owner or, you know, who, or the previous EC puts the sign up and leaves and with no, you know, sort of like the property we're dealing with cars, there's no easy way to contact. And, if, if there's, it feels to be a sort of a void, where ninety percent, maybe eighty percent of the time, it works. But there's another portion of the time where, where people become unavailable, or unwilling to, to maintain, or to, you know, after, once I've gone out of business, I don't wanna come back ninety days later and take the sign down. I may be gone, I may be out of state, who, who knows, and so, I guess there's the concern about how do we, what do we do if, if the owner is unwilling, or unable to make the corrections?
So there's always an abatement clause.
Okay.
You can all, you know, signage would be a unique one to abate yourself, but you could do that, and then you would, whatever it costed you to hire somebody to take that sign down, you would send a notice to the owner of the property that we've removed this sign at this cost, and you have so many days to pay for it, if they don't, then it'd be a lien on the property.
Okay.
Okay.
Code enforcement always operates that way. We try not to go that route, because liens are notoriously not paid. So it is that you're spending taxpayer dollars on private property, and you're probably not gonna see it back.
And they go back ages.
They do, and then I, I don't remember what the list is of who gets paid first when a property sells, but the city's not number one on that list.
A property we.
Normally by number three.
Yeah, you know, a property we attempted to buy that had a, had a lien from the city, or pavement, from the nineteen eighties.
Yeah.
Taxes in first, mortgages second, then liens.
Yeah, and, and depending on the lien, like the paving one, I don't know if they've waived that, and then usually, like, we had one that, we'll have some cleanup liens, and the property sold twice, and the lien is still there. Well, if it wasn't paid on the first sale, then it's, that lien is waived.
Yeah, if, if, if a property sells, like, for instance, we have a mowing lien on a property, and it sells at sheriff's sale, and it doesn't sell enough for enough to pay off the lien, then the lien goes away.
Yeah. You don't.
It's just like if, if there wasn't enough, if it wasn't sold for enough to cover the mortgage, or all of the mortgage, that mortgage goes away.
Yeah.
Um, then typically, you're gonna, gonna sell it for enough to cover your taxes and the cost of the sheriff's sale, but.
Yeah.
It's not always a given.
Yeah, because we, we had one recently that was, I think, sold three times, and they still had a cleanup lien. It's just not something that you keep billing until you get your money back. You have a one shot at it, and if it didn't sell for enough, you don't get that money.
This seems very thorough. I think we're gonna learn more as we go through the processes.
Typically, if somebody is going out and borrowing money to buy a property, that whoever they're borrowing will have a title search done.
Right.
And will ensure that that gets taken care of. It's just if it's an involuntary sale, like through a tax sale or something like that.
And that's just one of the risks we run, isn't it?
Yeah.
Doing, you know.
Yeah, and so, and we, and we budget for it, we have a city cleanup budget, it's just, it's the principle of spending the taxpayer dollars on private property is something that we try to stay away from as much as possible. As far as the ordinance, um, I will get that change in there, if, if y'all, if y'all are okay with approval, if you put that in your motion. Is there any other remarks on any recommended changes outside of the change to the landmark title? And the note to council to talk about pole signage, whether they want to allow that or not?
You'll take it to council and they'll decide?
They, they will have two looks at this, and so they'll see the proposed, that we're allowing different types of sign sizes, depending if you're on a highway or not, we defined that, and then we're encouraging them to set that sign farther back if they want a bigger sign.
Go over the, uh, commercial signs in the R section of that no commercial sign shall be erected on any undeveloped lot or land.
Yeah, let me find where you're at, section R.
Yeah, it's under, second last page.
Is it?
Back to where we started all this.
Okay, yeah, I see it, commercial signs.
Yeah.
Yeah, so what that's doing is, um, the intent of that is to prevent, um, commercial properties to buy vacant lot, or buy a portion of, obtain a right of way or some sort to a, a, in a vacant lot, and put their sign up for advertisement. Because that will just add to your clutter of signage, because they'll, they'll buy that portion, right, and then they'll say McDonald's five miles to your left. You know, you have.
Almost the situation that we got into with this pole sign. But I don't know if they bought that land.
Yeah, and so that has been in there. I do wanna point out this, this section that I added, um, that actually extends that regulation, which is a common regulation with commercial signage, about off-premise signage.
Yeah.
And see if the planning commissioner is comfortable with that. So currently, we don't allow for, um, signs to be within right of way at all, and then you can't have commercial signs on undeveloped plots. What I propose to add as well, which is, is something that we've enforced, is that we don't allow any off-premise signage, which means it could be a developed lot, this is the difference, it could be a developed lot, like, um, the plaza, and a contractor couldn't put their sign advertising their sales off-premise. They don't have a building there, they're just advertising that they buy homes, they sell homes, they build homes. And so that's something that I've added. We've notoriously always have removed those signs from properties, because they're always in the right of way, almost every time they're in the right of way. It's something that I've added, because it's a common thing that cities will do, that prevent that sign clutter, and it prevents the confusion that of, that the business is not on that site.
And those signs are, there's no, they're in the right of way, there's no notice requirements or anything taking down.
Yeah.
See that, like, Gat, where the Gaddys is, right? Is that kinda where you're?
There's a handyman sign at Gaddys, that one is not in the right of way, so right now, I can't touch that sign, but I'm proposing for that sign to be removed, that it should be removed, because he doesn't have an office down there, and they already have detached sign, even if he did have an office down there, they have a detached multi-tenant sign that advertises Gaddys and all the other establishments in there, so he doesn't need a sign promoting his business.
And that's addressed in this, correct?
Yeah, that's, that's what I just read, that we wouldn't allow off-premise signage, because that's on developed land, so right now.
Doesn't matter if it's in the right of way or not?
He's out of the right of way. If it's, if it's in the right of way, no matter where you put it, it's not allowed.
It's not allowed.
You gotta put that on your own property, and then at that point, that's where I'm, I'm amending this to say, we wanna regulate that, to where you can't have that sign there anymore. And he's not the only one, just since this is recorded, he's not the only one that does that, and so, there's others.
You have to put that on the, on your property where your business is.
Right.
So if I have, if I have a plumbing business, and I happen to own six properties around the city, I can't put my sign on all six properties, I have to put it where my place of business is. Correct.
Yes. That's what.
Doesn't matter the size or anything, correct?
That's right, it, it's just not allowed. And so, you can only advertise on the lot that you own where your business is at.
Okay.
After that, your advertisements can have to be in a form that's not a sign, whether you wanna put ads in the newspaper, run radio ads, that you do this type of work. There's other ways to get your message out than having a sign, and that's what we discussed last time with the electronic signs about, there is concern over the size and not allowing the, the messages to move. You know, my, my stance is gonna be, there's always another way to advertise than to use that type of sign. And so the city of Rockdale is not saying you can't advertise your business, you just can't advertise it in that specific way, because we have concerns over the traffic, of you distracting traffic, so we'd like you to do another type of advertisement.
And under you, not far from that commercial signs, there's one that says, certain signs prohibited on public property. Talking about attaching signs to utility poles?
That's right. And utility poles are usually in the right of way, they should always be in the right of way, but in some cases that it's not. And so that's just a catch-all, in case it's not, if somebody's posting signs, like we have a couple of, we, we go and pull signs off of telephone poles all the time. And they're all in the right of way, but this is just a catch-all, in case for whatever reason it's not, you're not allowing them to post that on, on utility poles. Encore doesn't want that either, or whoever owns the pole's not gonna want their signs on their poles.
Is this uh, kinda like the Daniel Willie signs, the advertising businesses though, they're not allowed? Is that what you're saying? Unless they're on their property?
Well, so his signs are a little different.
Not not his, I'm talking about businesses.
If if he had a, uh, yeah, if he had for his establishments that he was posting them all over town, that he does daycare services, we would ask him to remove them.
Okay.
Because that would be considered an off-premise sign.
So for instance, I see a number of plumbing signs.
Yes, they're they're subject to that. So they're they're right now, those ones that are right of way, I could go pull right now. But the ones that are on private property, we currently cannot do anything with them. And so I'm proposing to say they need to be removed. Because he does not have an office at the Donut Palace. For example, there's a sign there. He doesn't operate his business there, so that sign should not be there.
What what about the signs that like people have done work or they're currently doing work? Is there a time limit or something that can put their signs there?
So for residential properties, we do not get into that. We if somebody gets a new roof and they wanna advertise their roof, we'll let them advertise their roof and we won't. You know, if it's in the right of way, we may ask them, hey, can you just set it back a little bit farther on your property? Now, commercial, we're a lot more strict on because when other contractors, I'll use roofing, for example, if someone. If another roofer sees another roofer's sign, their natural thing is they're gonna come put their sign out somewhere, cause they wanna get business for roofs. If Rockdale's in the market for roofs, then we wanna be in that. We wanna have our name in the hat. And so we'll be a lot more strict on when we see it. We'll remove it.
Is there a limit in residential? I mean, somebody has thirty days?
Residential doesn't have a limit. Residential has a a sign maximum, which is fairly small. It's like ten square foot. Or something along those lines. I'd have to review that. But they don't have a stipulation that they can only post a sign for thirty days. It'd be more of the size of it.
Right of way is three feet?
Depends where you're at. Um, de- it depends how the road falls on the plat, because it doesn't always fall right in the center. And so maybe one is, and it depends how much, you know, they may have only did a twenty-foot pavement, but they may have gave forty-foot in right of way on that plat. So each side would have ten, or they may have more pavement and then each side has five. It just depends. It's not uniform.
On the residential, is it actually allowed or is it just that we give them some slack for certain?
It is allowed if it meets a size requirement, I believe. And so if somebody did a roof, that sign was small enough. Then they could have that in their yard advertising that they got a new roof. Now they. They could, yeah. I believe so. I don't believe we require them to remove it.
So signed by a contractor that is building, a building, not necessarily a house. It's not allowed for more than thirty days?
I I missed a question, I'm sorry.
Um, let's say Bland Construction's building a a business, a a building, not a residential, but a business. And they can't have their sign there for more than thirty days or so?
There's a stipulation that we don't require permit, I believe, on builders. That they can have that up while they're building, but then they're done, when they're done, it needs to be removed. I'll have to, I I'd have to see which section covers that, but I remember seeing that in here and I don't think that's something that I changed. Y'all have had that in your ordinance.
Okay.
Yeah, temporary construction signs allowed. It's on section five and Q. And then there's also a home builders and subdivision sign allowed. So y'all have stipulations that allow them to advertise that they're.
As long as it's under construction.
That's right. And you want them to have it that way, cause if you have an issue, those signs are supposed to have a phone number on it. So if there's, for example, if Corning someone's building and they're flooding someone out, you have a phone number on that sign to call and say, hey, you have an emergency over here. And you know who the builder is.
I saw this and it may be under unregulated signs and I can't find it again regarding vehicle signs. Um, a fire truck boom is considered a vehicle, right?
Yeah, a vehicle sign is something that you wouldn't typically regulate, cause usually it's someone in a business vehicle that may be stopping for lunch somewhere. Temporary parking in their vehicle. So we've had that. I believe it's on a section of unregulated. Yeah. And then there's also section K that talks about signs exempt from permitting procedures, which includes temporary political signs, temporary special event. And then, yeah, various others. Yeah. Business, industry, real estate, signs, advertising, sale lease, business, yeah. Right, yep. And then we have a signs that we don't regulate, which goes into when we're talking about the, when people have traffic signs and stuff like that. So. I don't believe we regulate vehicle signs. If that's something that the commissioner wants us to put in there, we could put in um. In one of these sections that you can only have a vehicle sign parked at a location for a set amount of time or be subject to.
Thought that was already in there with just like a vehicle ordinance or like a stationary vehicle ordinance or something. There was.
It was if it was stationary for us advertising, I think is what we.
Yeah, there was something in there about that already.
Okay. I I've read it somewhere, but I could not remember if we regulate it or if we don't.
And then also inoperable vehicles. So if it doesn't have tires or a.
Yeah.
Engine and.
And those would, yeah, those, yeah. Those would fall under junk vehicles as well.
I forgot what it says about special events, um, like directing parking or whatever. I've forgotten that. What does it say, Ben?
That should be in section K as well, is the.
Yeah, that one should be in the signs.
Temporary special event signs, but then there's also onsite traffic control.
Yeah.
Yeah, I saw that, but I don't remember where, what section?
K. On section K, you had temporary special event signs not exceeding fifty square foot and not being at a maximum time period of no more than fourteen days. And then they had to remove those signs within ten days after the maximum time periods allowed. That's where that would cover it. I'm trying to locate where the vehicles are, cause I know we talked about it somewhere in here.
Where is it at?
What's that?
So you found it?
The vehicle one is section L four.
Section L?
Signs displayed or used upon vehicles.
Okay, yeah. Vehicle signs, signs displayed or used upon vehicles, trailers. Unless such vehicle, trailer, aircraft on which such sign is displayed is permanently stationed for a period of seventy-two continuous hours or more. Or regularly used at a fixed location to serve the same or similar purpose of a permanent or portable sign, not affixed to a vehicle. So currently, we're saying we're not regulating that. We could if you if you choose to.
Well, it defines it as one that is not. So if it's there longer than seventy-two hours, it becomes not a vehicle sign. It becomes the sign that is.
That's right. Yeah. And so if that's too long of a time period for the commission, we can shorten it. Because, cause what Tim is saying is, once it's passed that time, if if code enforcement knows this is on a Monday and then on Friday it's still there, then it's considered a permanent sign. And so either that's acting as your permanent sign, which most likely they already have a permanent sign somewhere, so it would need to be removed.
Tell you an example where that was a problem. There was um, a VW van. That was completely covered in carpet with a carpet layer, sign on that. The carpet layer actually owned the building that they leased to the Dollar General. Right on the highway. And they parked their that that truck right in the parking lot, right on the highway, unrelated to the Dollar General. And it was, it was an ice or looked horrible, but we were able to regulate it because it was considered a. I mean, he if he if he had used that to drive around and and do his work, that's one thing, but just to leave it apart as a sign is.
And and there is one in this community for antique queens on the highway. That would be a permanent sign because that it's been there for years. It's it's still there. No, not that old. It's getting there. It was, it's 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 getting close to vintage, actually, cause it might be twenty-five. Yeah, twenty-five year mark. Yeah, that business has been gone for a long time, but that car is still there.
It is.
That car used to be pink, if you see it, by the way. It's not pink anymore.
Question, uh, the yield sign on Yocley, are they doing something about that? How long?
Yes. If you ever see a sign down, call the city hall, cause what we'll do is we'll put a ticket in and then the guys will go set it back up. Or they'll, if they have to order a new sign, they'll order a new sign. So the the sooner you see it, the better.
Marquee signs, I think we read something about that also, but it has action going on. So are we trying to stop that too?
Let me go to the, so we have attached signage and so we have permanent building signage that we would allow. We have awning signs and then we have neon signs and then we go into window signs. But we don't, I don't believe, we have marquee currently. I believe I've removed it because it kind of essentially will act as a wall sign usually.
Cause we did have it in here at one point in time, but I'm only saying, cause you know, you got the school sign off the highway. And and the, so you have the intermediate and the junior high with marquee signs. And you know, they relay messages throughout the year.
Yeah, those would really be defined as monument now.
Okay.
Is is how they are, cause they have a masonry finish. They would be actually electronic monument signs because they have an electronic message.
Okay.
Electronic messages are allowed. We would have to talk to the school about not scrolling those messages anymore. And then we'd also have to talk to the Chamber of Commerce.
Then we define font size and time, right?
It 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 cannot scroll, so we call for the message to stay on there for something around seven seconds. It can't. Eight seconds, it can't move. And then when you change it, it just needs to change. It doesn't need to scroll off. I missed your question. I I apologize.
No, I I said we did discuss font size and time of display.
Yeah, I don't think I got into the font size. I was telling y'all that some communities do that. I didn't wanna regulate that, cause that's for them to determine what they're gonna fit onto that screen. You know, if if it's too small of a font size, then it's not gonna do you any good in an advertisement, cause they're not gonna be able to read it.
Everybody's running out of gas, I guess.
Yeah, but to answer Commissioner Miles' question, I believe mark- marquee signs are not in there anymore, but it's just because the type of signs we. Define now, it would kind of fall in those categories. The marquee sign would.
Okay.
Into monument. And then there's some, some consider some marquee signs that they're actually attached to the building. It'd be like a wall sign. Marquee is almost like a broader definition for signs.
So if you, before you, and if you're, it seemed like you're drawing to an end. Before you call for a vote, can you summarize, if there's any changes to this that you've talked, that you wanna see made, can you summarize those changes? Or you can summarize what you understand.
Okay, I'll I'll tell you what I've what I've heard so far. The main one is we're changing the name of landmark sign to. Community significant sign, thank you. So we're gonna define that. And then anywhere else that's mentioned in the ordinance, I'll remove the landmark sign. And it'll be reflect community significant sign. We made remarks about some other items, but there hasn't really been anything that's changed from that. I think we've been good with everything so far. With the note to talk to council about pole signs. I think the commission's okay with the different types of signs on highway versus non-highway. And we're okay with those signs. That we talked about the design of them being a certain percentage of masonry, which y'all were okay with in the past. Is there any other? Concerns? We've talked about regulating the signs that we have that within there. We have temporary signs allowed for events that's in there.
And there's there's no variance for one right of way sign, right?
That's right. It's just not allowed. And so variances work on, there's several requirements to get a variance. One of them is being a self-created hardship. So if you go put your sign in a right of way and I remove it. You should not obtain a variance because you you created that hardship on yourself by putting that sign in a right of way.
So are we recommending people again for Daniel's position?
Hang on, hang on, hang on, hang on. No, sir, we gotta finish this. Are you ready to pass this on to city council?
I make a motion that we do.
So we have a motion that we have enough meat to pass on to city council to digest. All those in favor, right hand? All right, this is moving on to city council.
Okay, well, I will make those changes and then the city council will look at this and hopefully you guys will not have to see it again.
That's what we're hoping.
Thank you, Ben.
Of course, yeah, this, I'm I'm, I think this is gonna get us to our goals, but once it's adopted and we start enforcing it, we'll figure out how. If it's strong enough or if we need to make small amendments, you know.
Right.
Thank you, Ben. That was a lot of work. Appreciate it. Really do.
Thank y'all for digging down with me. Sign sign ordinance is always fun.
Yeah.
Always.
So, back to the original agenda, make sure. Yeah. Well, we have late-breaking news. We wanna compliment Daniel on making city council, but it puts us in a. Oh, you're saying congrats? Congratulations, but it puts us in a quandary. We're gonna need to replace him, right? Isn't that how we're chartered?
Yeah, and so we have already reached out to a past applicant, see if they're interested. We'll do our usual notices for anybody else that may be interested. And so you'll see that in an upcoming agenda for the replacement um, to fill that term.
And I think he may have had a name.
Yes. Yes, the more applicants, the better. It'll be the same process you've seen in the past. You'll interview. You'll have a scoring sheet and then you'll make your recommendation to city council and Commissioner Willie will vote on it.
I always had a had a requirement, Commissioner, that whenever you step down, you have to find your own replacement.
We still have to go through the process of looking at it. Uh, and is anyone reaching out to the ones that were opponents? At least Taylor maybe, you know, she might.
We can reach out, yeah. That's a good idea. We'll reach out to them and see if they're interested in serving as the commissioner.
No, have interest in serving something, yes.
Yeah.
That was an excellent idea, Charles.
Oh, you know, I got another one too.
Well, lay it on.
All right. You love tennis. Have you been down to Thrall and seen their tennis courts?
Uh, I haven't seen the new tennis courts.
The city owns the city park and tennis courts, right?
Oh, I don't know if the city owns that.
Who owns the tennis court?
Rockdale.
Ours? You talking about Bethune?
Oh, our, no.
Yeah, Rockdale.
Yeah, we own those, yeah.
Right, so in between the two city courts, you should go check out Thralls. They have where you can go upstairs and it's sitting up there on both, you can see on both sides of the courts. And bottom, they have brick and concession, concession stand and registrar, I mean restroom area. And then they have seating on this side and seating on this side with shade. And I think we have enough room. Maybe we got some donors or somebody around that wanna. Or the city wanna do something, but y'all should really go check out the facilities.
Every everything at Thrall right now.
Yeah, I've heard good things about it, so I'll just look at it.
Our courts, I think we can fit something like that and it's very nice and convenient for everyone. You got elderly's out there watching in the shade. You know, uh, kids, most of the kids are up top and it was controlled. It was nice. They had concessions where you can make money. While you hosting these tennis events, cause I see we have a lot of tennis events up there and.
That those courts get used a lot.
That's, that's a lot of opportunity, you know, and it's very nice.
Well, we can, we'll probably reach out to the school as well, cause the school uses those courts. And so I'm sure they may have some interest. They ran a tournament for the first time this year in quite a while at those courts. And so if they're gonna keep doing that, I'm sure they'll have interest.
Right now, we're working on getting their awnings replaced.
Yeah.
The awnings?
The awning did the court, did tatters.
Okay. Yeah, they definitely are utilizing it a lot.
Char- Charles, you would you wouldn't know this now, but one of my claims to fame in life is the nineteen eighty-four boys fourteen and under. Rockdale Open champion. That was Miss Parsley and and Miss Cook ran it.
Oh, yes.
Miss Parsley made me go home one day. That was when I was fifteen. Fourteen, I was still good.
They've been up there.
Have the trophy? Oh, yeah, that, I'm really literally one of my claims to fame. That was a big deal back then.
Yeah, the tournament used to be big.
Coming back.
Well, we appreciate your service to our planning and zoning commission.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, I just realized I didn't get a plaque, so I'm feeling kinda funny.
You know, well, he actually will serve, continue to serve until the replacement is.
Yeah.
I think.
You got time.
You got time.
If there's a, is there a statute, charter prohibition? I think, yeah, so he'll he'll be able to serve until we get a replacement, potentially, if he wants to.
Say that a little bit louder. I think he heard you well, well.
Bad news, huh?
There was that caveat at the end.
Yeah. All right, with all that being done, it's two forty. I'm gonna go ahead and adjourn, I will adjourn the meeting of the planning and zoning commission.
Turned out to be a pretty afternoon.